All right Supervisor Hammington, we are live on YouTube. And live on Zoom, you can proceed.
Okay, good morning. Morning everyone, today is Tuesday, May 26, 2020, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmar. And the governing body of all other special assessment in Paxton District for which said boards will act is now meeting in regular session. Kylie, I'm going to call this meeting to order, would you call roll please?
Supervisor Howard.
President.
Supervisor Callan.
Here.
Supervisor Gitlin.
Here.
Supervisor Berkowitz.
Here.
Chair Hemmingson.
Here. And at this time, we're going to take a moment of reflection. And if you will all please stand and join us, Chris Howard is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Introduction of new employees, do we have any?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Actions from closed session council.
There's nothing to report.
At this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda. And the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the board supervisors. Are there any such items? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to brief reports, and we're going to start with Supervisor Berkowitz.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The top three questions I get over and over again is when are we going to open up the county? It's in that order, one, two, and three. Well, I was pleased to see several of our local restaurants open their doors to indoor seating. They seem to be pleased with the outcome, however, several of the employees relate to me that wearing a mask all day long does hinder their ability to breathe freely. Hopefully, we'll get that problem solved. With the increase of COVID-19 cases in our county, it looks like we went to stage two just in time. In other news, along with the other board members, we two candidates for the position of county council. And I'm pleased that we're poised to make the right choice. And I attended the weekly meeting of the Crescent City Rotary Club by Zoom. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To start, I attended a meeting with various representatives from the Resiliency Committee with Small Business Administration Representative Julie Cowell. And in addition, US Commercial Service Representatives Elizabeth Proff. And this was a second meeting that we've had with them in order to help businesses in Delmar County find resources available through the various programs offered by SBA. Elizabeth has done some terrific work in our area in the past to look for export opportunities from the area to foreign countries. But in addition, the work that Julie has done as Director of SBA for Northern California, since she's been in that seat for the last seven months, has been great to provide resources to Delmar County in these tough times. In addition, had a meeting with Assemblyman Wood and various other supervisors from his district, District Two. We specifically focused on areas which are currently on our agenda today around realignment funds, both the 1991 and 2000 realignment funds, which provide basically a $15 billion safety net to counties. As you're aware, we're facing about a $1.7 billion budget shortfall with the state that does impact us. And as the assembly moves towards having a conversation with the governor this week, it's critical that the county's voice is heard along with other counties to ensure that that safety net, which is provided by the 1991 and 2011 realignment funds, it continues to flow to Delmar County. Attended a meeting of the North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District where we discussed our fiscal year 2010-2020 budget. And then also attended the county council interviews and a special board of supervisors meeting. I'll end this discussion and will request of the chair for our next meeting, a request that has come down from both the United Nations and from our sister city of Ricas in Taca to participate in World Refugee Day. World Refugee Day is held annually since 2000 and highlights refugee populations throughout the world that are displaced, not at their own will, but to communities outside their area at their free will. Refugees here in our community, as you well know, are the mong populations. And I think it would be great for the board and the city council to honor these populations and their relocation to Crescent City by highlighting World Refugee Day. The symbolic nature of this in solidarity with our sister city of Ricas in Taca would simply be to shine a blue light on a prominent feature in our community, which they will do the same. In this case, they'll sign a shiny blue on their tree if I'm too, the one pine left after the tsunami. We would consider proposing shining a blue light on our lighthouse at night, which would represent and symbolize World Refugee Day for the weekend of June 20. And I'll get that on the agenda for next time, so the board could take up consideration. That's the end of my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Gitlin.
Yes, thank you. Well, since our last Zoom meeting, our board in special session to interview candidates for the county council position. Will be discussed a little bit later in our agenda this morning. Saturday Angie and I took out our 34 Chevy truck and participated in the Curry Cruisers Northern Knights sponsored Curry to Delmar Classic Car Cruise. After some issues were, had some mechanical issues with the truck, we got it all up and running. And I participated with hundreds of other antique motorcycle and hot rods in the Curry to Delmar Cruise. I must share with you how great it felt to see folks outside enjoying these vehicles and actually feeling normal. It was a great day. Sunday, I hosted a celebration of life for Aaron Funk, owner of Camp Klamath. Aaron had no immediate family, his nephew requested our assistance in celebrating Aaron's life, and I was more than happy to offer our home. Also learned the passing of John Knox, owner of Delmar Physical Therapy. His passing was quite a shock to the community. John and his capable staff worked me personally through two knee replacements and helped me develop my lateral mobility as I underwent spinal fusion of my C1 and C2 back after UCSF surgery in 2018. John Knox was an exceptional man with exceptional skills. He will be dearly missed. He was 59. Last Wednesday, May 20, I was invited to speak as a private citizen before the Curry County Board of Commissioners. As you may already know, Curry County has reopened its county economy as of Friday, May 15, with appropriate safety conditions implemented. Retail, restaurants, short-term vacation rentals, and all aspects of the Curry County economy have reopened. Revenue streams have been reopened. And people were enjoying the Memorial Day weekend this past few days. In addressing the commissioners, I was accompanied by several Delmar County businesses who also spoke and asked questions of Chairman Chris Pash, Vice Chair Court Voice, and Commissioner Sue Gold. The meeting was a productive one, and it is my hope our public health officer, Dr. Raywall, will examine the details of the Curry opening. At present, Curry County has, at this date, six active COVID-19 cases, all non-hospitalized and zero deaths associated with the virus. The commissions also was unanimous in reaching out to our county, Delmar County, and requesting additional discussion and development of a sister county relationship because of our contiguous geography. I shared with the commissioners a recent Curry County outreach due to a discontinued program in Curry County and sought to, which then sought to utilize a Department of Health and Human Services program in Delmar County. And I referred that matter was submitted by Curry County Operations Manager Julie Schmelzer when she contacted me and I in turn turned her over to Heather Snow in DHHS for inquiry into utilizing our county to provide services to Curry County citizens. As recently as 1999 through 2005, through the Border Coast Economic Zone, Curry County and Delmar County met on both sides of the border regularly and developed programs totaling over $40 million. Sadly, this interstate program has faded away, and for the past almost 15 years, our counties have not exchanged commerce and discussion on a regular basis. Vice Chair Court Voice was quick to share his appreciation to Delmar County and the state of California on the delivery of fire emergency services for the Chepco fires two years and three years ago respectively. The Delmar Amateur Radio Club provided valuable emergency services for these incidents and has always been available when called upon. I'm hopeful this sister county economic relationship can be further explored and developed to the mutual benefit of citizens on both sides of the border. I have and continue to be called upon regarding the recent Public Health Office mandates on the wearing of face masks. I say they're mandates because I'm hopeful we'll get some clarity on this question. Saturday and Sunday, I was out and about and entered Walmart and Safeway with no mask requirement to when, and when I attempted to enter Home Depot a little later that afternoon, and also Big Five, I was mandated to wear a mask. In reading of the recent directive, the order stipulates anyone entering a store should, and I'll capitalize, should have a mask, face mask. And when one comes into contact with another individual, must wear the mask. I am and continue to be concerned there's an uneven application of this mandate or recommendation, since it appears individual stores have flexibility on what is required to enter the store in question. I was told by one of the major retailers, he thought it was a county ordinance requiring the face mask. I assured him, store manager, there was no county ordinance adopting requiring the wearing of a face mask. And he was told that fines and citations would be issued by the Office of Emergency Services if stores and individuals did not comply. Lots of questions and some confusion. One could not help but notice many of our local motels experienced lots of vehicles in their parking lots. Our Delmar County motel is open, and if so, on what percentage and what basis? The public is also genuinely confused. And again, it's my hope that Public Health Officer Dr. Raywall will deliver some clarity on the recommendations and mandates that he has presented. As of this morning, here are the latest COVID numbers for Delmar County. 933 tests administered, there are 52 awaiting results, there's 841 negative results. At this time, there are 40, 40 confirmed COVID-19 virus cases, all non-hospitalized. And at this point, seven have recovered or back in the community. Pelican Bay State Prison reports zero inmates and one staff infection, again, non-hospitalized. Mask protocol implement among all staff in contact with inmates has been started and continues at Pelican Bay State Prison. We can see a spike in the number of tests taken and the increases in positive cases. Obviously, I gave you this morning's number 40, and those cases are recovering. And I want to close by saying, ladies and gentlemen, it's time to reopen Delmar County safely and responsibly. That's my report.
Vice Chair Callan.
Thank you Chairman. Like everyone else, well, I guess not. Started off last, after our last meeting with three interviews for potential developers for No Place Like Home, along with Chairman Hammington. Attended to the special Board of Supervisors meeting with everyone else, and also, like spoken before, participated in the interviews for county council. Had another meeting with Supervisor Hammington, CAO Serena, Heather Snow, Heidi Consel, and Tony to choose the developer that we had interviewed the week prior for looking for a development for No Place Like Home funds for permanent supportive housing for the homeless. Had a meeting with CAO Serena and Senator McGuire primarily to discuss homeless issues, but conversations also went to COVID-19, what's going on in our community, what's working, what we're doing, and other issues. Met with Daphne from Mission Possible and the HAP fundings that they'll be receiving very soon in the construction that they will then do to bring in a 24-hour homeless shelter to Delmar County. Like everyone else, numerous calls and texts regarding COVID policies, things that are being put in place, how they're being monitored. I guess the unfair way of, some are following and some aren't. I think there's a lot of concern with that, and that probably just comes down to the confusion. Some are trying to do what's right and others just are doing what they want. But that's something that we will deal with and as we move forward, and that's it for me.
Thank you. I, as Supervisor Callan mentioned, we did interview for the development sponsors for No Place Like Home. As as well as later following up and society on the sponsor. I attended the Pink Shrimp webinar. And also attended the special board meeting with county council interviews. I would like to say congratulations to Ted Ward on his appointment to the AB 1583 statewide commission on recycling markets and curbside recycling. So, good job Ted, thank you for that. I did a gender review. We had an RCRC video or Zoom executive committee meeting along with our other, our normal activities. We also decided to waive member county dues for counties for 2020 through 2021 year. So that's a good thing. And as you may or may not know, on May 20, national and state parks in Delmar County have opened parking lots and trailheads. Visitor centers and campgrounds remain closed. Also went to the cemetery on Memorial Day where I was pretty sure there wasn't going to be an activity, but there were the gun salute as well as taps were played about 11 o'clock. So I did, I did engage with that. So that was it for me. Okay, so it is 10:20, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Any other discussion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any public comment?
Letting me know.
Kylie, anything or?
I'm looking just to give them a second to raise their hands, and I am not seeing any at this time.
Okay, since there is no public comment, we'll move on to the board. Any further discussion or questions, comments? Seeing none Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Callan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson.
Yes. Okay, so we are going to move on to item number 10, which is to approve and accept the resignation of Elizabeth Gable, Delmar County Council effective May 22, 2020. As requested by administrative officer, I'm sorry.
Move to approve.
Thank you, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any public comment?
I'm not seeing any at this time, Chair.
Okay, seeing no public comment, any further comments or questions?
Chair, there was a letter that we'd like to be read aloud if you don't mind.
Do you want to read that before the vote?
That's up to you.
Um, yeah, I can, I can certainly read it. Yeah, I've got a statement from Elizabeth. This is to the Delmar County Board of Supervisors, county staff, and Delmar Community. This is from Elizabeth. In 2012, I began my journey with Delmar County, first as deputy council, county council. And then in 2015, I was appointed county council. During that time, I've had the opportunity to grow, not only in my career as your attorney, but as your advocate, but also as a member of this community. I have learned that this community is strong, resilient, and unique. I know I will always cherish my memories of the beach, the trails, the forest, but most of all, it's people that my mind keeps coming back to. Delmar County has an extraordinary staff, and I could not ask for a better group of people to spend nearly eight years of my life with. I know that each of you as board members care deeply about this community, and I am proud to have been able to be part of many things that have been accomplished over the years. It has been one of the greatest pleasures of my life to represent you as a board, to get to, get to know and work with each of you. I am immensely proud of the strong office we have built as county council. One thing the public really doesn't get to see, and the board only sees once is is the incredible hard work of our staff and county council does every day. While letting go is never easy, I will know, I will know, I will be leaving this office in good hands with Joel Campbell Blair, Delmar County's new county council, as well as our amazing staff at the county council. I could not be happier with the board's choice for my replacement, and I wish you, Joel, a long and productive career with the county. I am well aware that every moment of life is a gift, and every moment I have spent with you all that I've spent with you all at the county has been intentional. I'm eternally grateful for this opportunity to have spent this season of my life and career with you in this beautiful area. While there have been challenges at times, I will take the memory of all of you, board, staff, and community with me in my new career with the state of California. I am confident I will one day return to Delmar County in some capacity, and I hope to see you all again very soon. Elizabeth Gable, County Council, October 2015 to May 2020. Kylie, would you pull the vote please?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Callan?
Yes.
Excuse me Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson.
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on now to our timed item of public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing a word regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Kylie, is there any public comment written or?
I have two written public comments. The first one is from Connie Orman. And it says, we need to know how long you expect us to keep this up. We took a solid $5,000 hit this last weekend, the official start, the official start of our season. We turned away hundreds of short-term renters only to learn that they had been welcomed in Klamath Campgrounds and vacation rentals here in Crescent City. Not only are we losing money, we are losing customers. Do we really think we can continue on this way? And then I got another one from Mike Thornton. And it says, at least two hotels, perhaps other local vacation rentals and businesses as well, have opened in direct contravention of Delmar County Public Health and state of California's directives regarding stopping the spread of coronavirus. Documented cases of coronavirus are growing at an exponential rate in Delmar County. Does the Delmar County Board of Supervisors support the public health officer in compliance with his and other lawful public health directives? Or can local businesses pick and choose what laws, regulations, and rules they will comply with regardless of the effect on public health? That's it for written.
Okay, is there any, buddy with their hand raised?
I'm going to give it a couple seconds Chair. I do see one.
Okay.
Having a little trouble with my laptop, give me just a second. Looks like they put their hand down, I'm not seeing anybody anymore.
They're, they're promoted over to the panelist side, they had an older version of Zoom. Thomas Barnes, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me? Vote? It's Thomas Barnes?
Yes, we can hear you, it's pretty soft volume.
Pretty weak.
Well, let me get closer and see if you can hear me. My question was, I'm assuming that we're going to get back to item number eight on the agenda where we're going to have a COVID-19 update by Dr. Raywall, is that correct? Have you had that already? Did I miss it? Can you not hear me?
Cannot hear you very well.
You say you can or you cannot?
Cannot.
Okay, let me speak up. Are we going to get back to item number eight on the agenda?
What is your comment?
Item number eight on the agenda, I'm wondering if we're going to get back to that.
Is that your comment? Sounds like a question, this is comment period.
Well, okay, I guess my comment is, is that I didn't hear item number eight on the agenda. That would be my comment.
Haven't got number eight, number eight will come up at 10:30.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment Kylie?
We do have one.
Okay.
I have to promote to panelist. Give me just one second. Linda, can you hear us?
I can, I thought I had this fixed. Okay, public comment, so what Mr. Barnes, we're not allowed to ask you folks questions during public comment, is that, is that what I'm understanding?
It's called public comment, it is not called public question and answer.
Okay, okay, that's fine. So, Mr. Barnes was concerned about whether we're going to get public comment after the doctor speaks. I'd like to say as some following the rules and some not in regards to that. The people who are following the rules are the ones who always follow the rules, but then when we have our own supervisors that don't follow the rules, then how do you expect people to follow the rules? As far as hotels and B&Bs and such, I noticed that Medford, Oregon, all their hotels have been opened. And Brookings, Oregon, we all know that it's completely opened up, so you know, you're, you're not doing our county any favors by keeping things shut down the way that they are, and it's going to hurt the county and it's going to hurt the city as far as revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I am not seeing any at this time.
Okay, so we'll close the public comment period and we'll move on to our item number eight, which is our 10:30 time item, which is an update from Dr. Raywall. Doctor, you're on.
Sorry, had to unmute. Yeah, good morning, I
Yeah, uh, good morning, I imagine everybody has been keeping track of some changes over the last week in terms of our counts. Uh, I think we're up to forty positives this morning. Uh, we have about almost a thousand tests done, nine hundred and thirty plus, I think. What this might mean, I just wanna say at the outset, the majority of what we're, we're seeing with this is uh people coming back positive who we've directed to go in to get tested as part of our case investigation and our contact tracing. At least about half of them, we have some genuine new positives, people who came in on their own. Uh, but for example, we had thirty-seven yesterday as our total, we have forty this morning, two of those three new positives were were positives that we had directed, so a lot of this sudden swell in numbers has to do with the fact that we're doing this aggressive contact tracing strategy that is being implemented statewide. And people need to understand that, um, cuz that keeps a little bit of perspective on what the numbers mean. A genuine increase in case counts of people walking in on their own, there's no question about that. Probably at least eight to twelve new cases uh of that nature. Probably some more, depending on how you look at it, some of, some of the cases that were directed uh by clinics turned out to be contacts with some of the cases that we were investigating. And that's really what we're seeing, we're seeing community spread in real time by, by doing this contact tracing. Uh, and the health staff has been working overtime, we worked every day this weekend, on the Memorial Day weekend, we worked every day last weekend. Uh, they've been working every day in between. It's just a whole new, whole new level of, of activity and work for us. Uh, but we're learning a lot about this, especially as we go, and one of the things we've learned the most is that there are a number, a significant number of people who are asymptomatic. We asked them to go in and get tested because we decided that they have a significant, significant contact with someone who's positive, and lo and behold, they come back positive too. So that means either they were asymptomatic, they weren't gonna have symptoms at all, or they were pre-symptomatic, they were in that two-day window or so before someone starts to have symptoms of COVID nineteen, and we're catching them just because of contacts. And that's the purpose of this whole program, is we find those people early enough that we can get them to stay home, get them to isolate and get them to get the word out to their friends and family to stay away, and that's how we slow down transmission, and that's the whole purpose of this. So it's kind of uh intimidating numbers in a way, but for us, it makes perfect sense because of what we're seeing in the community. And we also, I also wanted to uh stress the importance that I don't think this has anything to do with the very early s- stage of reopening. I think it has more to do with uh probably people not being quite as disciplined about staying at home and and, you know, washing their hands and not, and, and social distancing and wearing masks. I think there were more private parties going on, probably around Mother's Day and maybe before that. Uh, I, I just have the sense from, from the stories and, and the information we're getting from the community that up until this last week or two ago, uh, people had been kind of letting their guard down, and I just wanna stress that now is not the time to do that, now is the time to actually put your guard up uh in, in a big way, especially if you're a high-risk person. Cuz that really is the take-home that we're seeing everywhere else, is that if the high-risk people, the elderly people or the people with chronic medical conditions that put them at high risk, if they stay home and if they continue to shelter in place, that's their best protection. Because when virus starts to move around the community, there really isn't a safe space out there. You know, people take precautions, they do everything they can, and, and I think we're gonna see it's slowed down, it's gonna speed up and slow down, it's gonna, a lot of factors that play into this. But for the high-risk person, they just shouldn't take any chances, I, I just can't stress that enough. That's the best way to protect them, because they're the ones who are most likely to have a bad outcome, and it's the best way to make sure our system doesn't get overwhelmed. Just wanna say a few other words about the nature of where we're seeing this. You know, we've, we've seen outbreaks that are kind of interconnected, uh, there are uh some positive workers out at the prison. We've had some positive cases in some of the agricultural work, uh, had some positive cases at the hospital. Um, and this is to be expected, you know, there's, there's no perfect defense line against this virus, all these the, these venues and private businesses and, you know, sooner or later, every part of our community is gonna get touched by this virus. We're basically seeing the first real wave of virus hitting Delmar County uh with this uptick, cuz this is what we've been gearing up for, for a long time, and this is the very start of it. So the other final take-home message, and I wanna stress to people, is that this is gonna go on for a while. Um, you know, we are, people talk about the first wave, I think the first wave is really hitting us for the first time in a way that, that makes a difference and gets people's attention, and I want people to pay attention, I want people to take it seriously, cuz it is serious. We still have no hospitalizations for COVID, which is good. Uh, but sooner or later, people, someone is gonna get sick enough to be in the hospital, and people need to expect that, it's gonna happen. And I think that's all my comments for this morning, uh, we're gonna try and get some bulletins out to the community. I'm trying to send out a bulletin to the healthcare providers, there's some, some new testing strategies and some information I think they need. Oh, there is one other comment that I, uh, one other news item I should, probably should mention, come think of it. We are working pretty hard to get a drive-up testing site in Delmar. Uh, we don't have it completely finalized, but we're hoping we're gonna get it here very soon, possibly as early as this week. And that's a mobile testing site that's gonna be shared with another county out here in the corner of the state. But we're hoping that it will allow at least a, a drive-up site two or three days a week, which would be huge, it'd be huge for this county, it would allow a lot of testing to go on from a lot of these industries that we've mentioned, and from people who are just concerned and, and wanna know if they're positive or not, that's the, that's what everyone has been talking about for months nationwide about getting that available, and I think it's finally gonna get here in Delmar, which is, it's a real positive development, it's a good, good step for us.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Raywall, any questions or comments from board members?
Yes. Doctor, I get calls on a daily basis, maybe two or three, on when can RV owners and hotel owners begin to open up?
Well, by the state guidelines that we're still following, the state planning, they're still off the table. Um, you know, we ran into a little bit of a problem this last weekend because we learned that a number of our hotel owners had been taking bookings that they probably shouldn't have. Um, and we know there were some people here who were, were basically showing up just to travel and enjoy the weekend. So, you know, I'm, I realize how much of a hardship it is. I think when the state gives us some guidance and, and tells us it's time to relax that requirement, we can tell those folks, yeah, it's time to open up, but hesitate to do that right now, we're opening up so many other things at the same time that uh we don't want to over, overtake ourselves and, and have too much pressure on our system with too much virus transmission. I think probably we're gonna get an answer very soon about that. But for right now, I think we need to kind of keep the foot off the gas pedal as far as, as letting that reopen, and if anything, we need to, to warn people that it's, now is not the time to be doing it on your own.
What do you think uh very soon means?
Well, the way things are going, it's hard to predict because uh up until this last week, I, I wasn't, I really wasn't imagining that uh the hair salons and barber shops were gonna be opening up, you know, everyone probably has heard the news from yesterday about uh state guides uh coming out for those businesses. Um, we are gonna ask them to submit plans to us before they open. Um, and, you know, everyone needs to follow the same rules we're applying to all our businesses, but uh, I would not have imagined this time last week that that was gonna happen today. So I, my answer is I don't know, you know, that's the short answer. Uh, I'd like to say within a month, I, I think for a lot of people, we'd like to, you know, obviously, people who are in this business and in the hotel business, they wanna be able to accommodate tourism and, and uh have a, at least part of a tourist season this summer. The problem is, I know that one of the goals of this, at the state level, is to not really facilitate a lot of movement of people back and forth between various places and, you know. And our problem is, we're right on the border with Oregon, and Oregon has a different level of activity right now. So, kind of uh feeling the effect of that, I think, and that puts us in a tougher spot. So I'm hopeful they give us some clearer direction, and I hope they do it in a staged fashion, I think it makes more sense to do it stepwise rather than to just open it up all at once. But we'll, we'll find out when it happens, and I wish I could be more precise than that, I don't think I can.
Thank you. Doctor Raywall, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin here. You know, I'd like to address some of the statements, the comments you just made, say many of these cases are asymptomatic. So, if you don't, if you are, I guess I'm asking the question rhetorically, if you don't know if you're infected, how do you know if you're sick? And that could be everyone in this world we're talking to in Delmar County. I feel fine, I, I don't know if I have this disease, do I have to get tested, am I contagious? Um, these are questions that I'd like some clarity on. The other questions I'd like you to address to our folks here today is this masking ma- mandate, and I don't know if it's a mandate or it's a recommendation, but there's some conflict there, some conflict there. I'll name the stores, Home Depot had on their signage that you cannot enter the store without a mask. I know one individual who wore the mask became, had a medical condition, and she became hyperventilating because of that, and quickly had to leave the store, so there was no warning that there was any medical exemption. Also, the folks at uh Big Five, you can't enter the store without a mask, however, over the weekend, I personally went into Walmart and to the, 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 the markets. And there was no masking requirement. And I'm wondering if there's some conflict, are those, are those entities, these stores that are operating now, are, are they under the same mandate, if it's a vacuum, man, to uh have a mask there, and I'm, I've read your order, I'm looking at it, it says that if you come into a store, you should, and it's indicated, you should have a mask, and then it also said you must wear it when you come into public content, so the should and the must, I'm hoping we can get some, some clarity on this. And though I have great amount of respect for you, Dr. Raywall, I, I'm, I'm concerned that you're operating within a vacuum, it's, it's your office and your office alone, which is, has all this data on these forty cases, and it's not been shared with our healthcare district, and I hope that will change, I hope you will bring in medical professionals who have a different set of mindset on how we diffuse this important information. I'm using one good example that Humboldt County, which has, I think at this point ninety-five cases. Um, I read a report, I saw it on Channel Three, that the public health officer um was warning people who frequented a certain gas station, I'll name it, the Chevron's gas station, Aztec Grill in McKinleyville, between May fifteenth and May twentieth, between four thirty AM and three PM, to please have yourself tested, this was from Dr. Frankovich. Now, why are we not hearing this kind of information? And I don't wanna get into the area of violating HIPAA, but why are we not knowing more information about these forty people who are in our community and I presume recuperating at home? Are these clustered cases, are there combination, are they all individuals? What information can you share with this board of supervisors so that we keep our community safe? And at the same time, we move forward as expeditiously as possible in reopening our economy so that another set of circumstances, which doesn't involve you, that's uh the business aspect, the economy, your, your message is, is a medical one, so that we can balance these and open our county safely and responsibly, and hopefully with no issues having to do with hospitalization and or certainly death, so I would appreciate your addressing those uh comments that I've made and uh doing so in a way that is transparent and open and understandable, thank you, Dr. Raywall.
Sure, uh, let me talk about the masking first, uh, cuz this does need some clarification. I have been thinking for a long time that encouraging people to use a mask was sufficient. You know, two months ago, and a half ago, or even a month ago, uh, when we had such low-level activity, my goal was mask use so that people get used to the idea. But I think any of us in public health at various levels and certainly around the state, and even in, in Humboldt County, where they've had a, a mandatory mask order for some time, have thought that at some point, as we go into reopening the economy and reopening the community, masking takes on greater importance. And especially with what we've learned about uh at national levels, at the state level, about asymptomatic spread. Because if you mask and you don't know you're sick, or you're, you're never gonna feel symptoms of having the illness, that's the best protection for the people around you, and that's really what we're trying to afford. So, we ordered this order so that people would get used to the idea of carrying a mask all the time, just have it on you. If you're outdoors, trail, or you're on an open sidewalk, or you're walking by a park and there's nobody around, you don't need to have that mask on. If you're in your own car, you need to have that mask on. But if you step into a place, we want you to, to have the courtesy to put that mask on to protect everyone else in that public place. And then we want it possible for all those businesses to have their employees wear masks to protect their customers, because it works both ways. And it's really that simple, in that public space, especially the indoor space, where you have closed air, closed confined airspace and you're sharing all that, that's when having a mask on everybody makes the most sense, and it really has the biggest payoff. There are some people who have medical reasons who sh- can't wear a mask, they can't tolerate it for very long, and those people make exception to them, you know, there's no getting around that. But for the vast, the people in the county, putting a mask indoors to, to shop or to conduct business of any kind should not be that much of a burden, because you're protecting your fellow residents, you're protecting the people in there who are trying to give you whatever service you're asking for, or, or help you purchase, you're therefore, you're, everyone is protecting everyone else, and that's the key message about masking. And I, I can't stress it enough, especially with what we know about being asymptomatic, it's very important. And as far as being asymptomatic, you know, we are identifying people based on how we uh identify the level of contact they've had, is it a high-risk contact, is it a very likely contact that created transmission of the virus? For the average person, you have no contacts that you're aware of, if you haven't been around anyone who's been sick, who's self-identified, who's told you, yeah, I've had COVID and, and you should get tested, because we, you know, we spent half an hour talking yesterday or the day before. If you haven't had that, you don't have to presume that you need to be tested, you know, how would you know? But have had that kind of information from a friend or a family member, or you're called by us and you're identified as a contact for someone who's positive, then you should absolutely consider that you might be asymptomatic and still spreading the virus. And the easiest way to get around that is to have that mask and wear it all the time. Wear it all the time when you're in public, because you, you can't presume any given time that you may have been in contact with someone, especially as the virus becomes more widespread in the community. I can't stress that enough either, I mean, it, it's, it's important to, to think of yourself, we talked about this before. Think of yourself as being that, that bubble around you of security. You know, try and keep social distance, but you're also, by putting that mask on, you're creating security for the other people who are right next to you, right around you in that, that bubble of security, cuz you don't wanna spread virus to them. As far as the nation, uh, you know, we do our best to protect HIPAA, we protect identities. We get the information out to the people who need to know it, who absolutely need to know it because they've been in contact. And, you know, words, people can self-identify if they want to, but we're not gonna take the, we're not gonna take the uh assumption that it's up for us to identify them publicly. So, by places, we can identify circumstances, you know, use the example that Dr. Frankovich identified a specific place, a specific timeframe. Obviously, there was, there was someone who they identified as a spreading person, someone who was contagious in that particular instance, and they wanted to find out people who've been there so they could identify them. But they didn't identify name, they didn't say so-and-so at uh, at Aztec Grill was positive and you need to check out if you've talked to that person. I mean, they, they put parameters on it, and that's what we have to do too. We haven't had an, since yet where we have to go public with that kind of public request for information. But it may happen, you know, there may be a, a set of circumstances down the road where we're gonna have to do exactly a strategy like that in order to find people who were exposed. And, you know, this is gonna go in a lot of different directions over the next few months, and so it's not unforeseeable at all that, that we would be in a circumstance like that. But we wanna protect the identities of people because we don't want anyone to target them in any way. And we want to allow them time to, to get used to the idea of being positive, I mean, it's a shock to the system, not only physically but psychologically to learn that you're a positive case, and so, yeah, we're protecting people's identity as much as we can.
Dr. Raywall, just a quick follow-up on this. Two weeks ago, we had this discussion. There were four cases. I'm not asking for HIPAA violations. Now we have forty. We, the public would like to know, without specific personal information, where is this happening? Are these forty cases all related? Are they combinations? Or are they just spread around Del Norte County? I mean, this is important information so people can govern their activities accordingly. They can say, well, this is an area that I need to avoid or frequent, if that's the case, to keep safe. So that is where I'm, I'm asking you to please reach out and share this data that you and only you have. You have those, that you have that information. You essentially, you have all the cards in the deck. We don't know where this is coming from. We don't have that information. So we're only trying to surmise some kind of conclusion of how we can move forward to open up our county safely and responsibly. So that's why I asked you to please reach out to our, 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 our healthcare district. These are professionals of like mind and like thinking, and share this data with them. Now, I, I know you don't answer to them, but I think it's important that the public has a balanced view. It isn't just one individual who's holding all this information, Dr. Warren Raywall. It isn't just one person. We have a team of people of varying opinions. And that's important to share and be transparent in our community to keep us safe and open up our businesses responsibly. I want to make that point and underscore that. Thank you, Dr. Raywall.
You're welcome. Yeah, and I'll, I'll comment on that just briefly. You know, there is a lot of interconnectedness between these groups that we're, we're following. And that's why I describe it as community spread. You know, there are people who are roommates, there are coworkers. You know, I talked, I mentioned agricultural workers are one group. We've had a, a small number of positive kick to the hospital. We've had a couple positives at Pelican Bay State Prison, not among the, it's only among workers. And there's a lot of connectedness between all of this. And, you know, that would reveal, if I tried to describe all that in detail, that would reveal a lot of personal information that I, I don't think anyone needs to, to know about. It just, it, just that this is very much interconnected and, and because someone shares a room, someone is a coworker. I mean, it goes on and on and on. And it's, it is what we are seeing clearly is a pattern of community spread. And that's how community spread happens. I mean, the virus gets in household, it, sooner or later, household members are infected. And sometimes they'll infect their friends or their coworkers. And it just kind of spreads away from, from those, those focal points in, in, in a way that, that links up with others. It's kind of a complicated, it's very hard to just visually showing, and we can't do that. But it's suffice to say that it is, it is a clear marker of how this spreads through communities, what we've uncovered this last week and a half. So, you know, if we, if we find something that is more focal, that is, you know, a hotspot that people need to be aware of, absolutely, we're going to, to make them aware. But for now, you know, what we're seeing is mostly households, workers handing it off to other workers, work environments, pretty much typical for community spread of the virus. And I think, you know, I think right now it's, it's, it's good. We're going to get new cases. We're going to keep investigating them. And we're going to have to, we have, we actually need more contact tracers. We, we're training a bunch this last week. We're training more this week. To stay ahead of, yeah. I'm going to tell you, I, I'm going to join the healthcare district meeting tonight, give them an update. And I will with them as much as can and will. And I, I, I believe in keeping them informed and, and their valuable opinions and important voices in the community.
Thank you. Anybody got anything else?
Dr. Raywall, we had the opportunity to speak this week concerning antibody testing. And I thought you had some important information to share that would be helpful for the community that's engaged in this discussion today. Can you share the reasonings that, Elise, you don't believe some of the early antibody tests that people have now taken because they were sick in November, December, and January? Why that information where they had positive results with the antibody test might not necessarily be positive results for COVID nineteen?
Well, the main reason is we don't know how good the tests are. You know, there's a lot of things out on the market right now, none of which have been, there's not been enough time to really study how valid they are. The antibody tests cross-react with other coronavirus antibodies. So they're not as specific as we'd like them to be. And the basic utility of doing that is presumes that there's a lot of disease activity in the, in the community. And that makes the test result more valid. It's hard to explain that, but it's, it's something we call predictive value of a test. And when you, when you think that you're, you're, whatever you're testing for is not very active, because in this case, because it's brand new, a positive or a test doesn't help very much either. Well, there's a lot of people who look back on the flu we had last year and think, well, maybe this virus was coming through back in November and nobody knew about it. I, I don't believe, I, I think the serology testing that has been done around the state and around the country shows that for the most part, most communities have been virtually untouched. There are some places where there's been more virus activity, where more people are now positive, had more virus activity. But for the most, it's been done, the numbers have been very low, you know, less than ten percent. And if we'd had a surge of this come through unbeknownst last year, I think we would see much, much higher numbers than that. I think it happened last year is we had a, a bad flu season and we had a lot of flu-like illness going around. And people are looking back and, and wondering, well, maybe that was it. I don't think the, the behavior of this virus when it hits a community and hits places where a lot of people are at risk and susceptible, sends a lot of people to the hospital and virtually overwhelms the hospital. That's really what happened in New York and New Jersey. And, you know, it would happen anywhere. If, if that were the case, I think we would have had a completely different story last November, last December. And we wouldn't, I, I, I just don't, there's, there's no good scientific data to support any other conclusion. I think out of Wuhan, in January, it was starting to trickle out. I think we probably a lot more transmission in January and February than we realized. We just don't know about it. We're not going to backtrack on it now. It's going to be very hard to do. And now we're dealing with this virus in real time here. You know, in, in early March, that's when we started in some of the restrictions and movement and travel and gathering together that, that slowed the virus down. And then we went to shelter in place. And that pretty much shut it down for places like us. You know, everyone can understand that Del Norte is nowhere, anywhere near like San Francisco or Los Angeles in terms of population density and opportunity for transmission. There's just not as many people out and about at any given time. So for us, it's down almost to zero. And then, you know, for a while, I thought it probably was zero. You know, now we're back at the reality of it. I think we're really seeing the first wave here, literally right now, this last week. And I think, like I said, a lot of it has to do with the fact that people were starting to let their guard down. And now to put their guard back up. I, I, the, the value of serology going forward will be that when we've had enough disease activity going through the community, that we think we can get some reliable testing, I would like to do a random sample, a true random sample of our community and see where we really are. Sometime this summer, sometime in the next month or two. We're still in a design stage. So, because that's, that's a big project all on its own. And we've obviously got a lot of other stuff going on. And, and start from. And that's important because we want to be able to compare down the road after we've more virus activity, maybe going into the fall season, where we are at that point. And people talk about unity. And that's an important thing to know about. Because if we get enough people get through this virus safely, they, you know, they can get off, they can do well with it. We can get enough people in the community infected and recovered that, you know, there, there is some protection for the rest of the community that's still at high risk. And it's not an unreasonable goal. I think that's kind of the backdrop of all of this is that everyone realizes that sooner or later, we just have to learn to live with this virus and let it work its way through our, our communities around the nation. So it has a role to play, certainly in the upcoming months. Right now, I think it's, the, the testing is not very well validated. It's just not as reliable as we'd like it to see. And I think we're seeing a lot of positives. So I'm going to leave it at that. And that's, that's my theory of serology. I'd, I'd like to use it as a tool. It's just not quite there yet.
Thank you, Doctor. Lori, have you got anything?
I'm good. Just thanks for all the work that public health is doing. A lot of responsibilities put on them. I think you guys are doing an excellent job. Message to the community is to be safe. I think, I think Dr. Raywall, you're right. I've watched people go from being very concerned and cautious of others to not caring at all and a lot less masks, a lot of people in town this weekend. Lot of things open that shouldn't have been. So hopefully, everybody hears what you're saying and that we can work together to keep our community safe. I think that's really important right now.
Yeah. And if I could just follow up on that, also with some of the comments that have been, that have been made. You know, it seems that it's been forgotten that, you know, one of the first, first things you said was to assume that you have it and assume that everyone around you has it. And therefore, if you're asymptomatic, you should be wearing, that's one reason you should be wearing a mask, regardless of whether you think you've got it or not, that you are protecting others. And if you're going to be selfish to yourself and not try to protect others from yourself, I think we're in real trouble. So I, I think, I, I think the wearing of the mask is to protect others. They've already said it doesn't protect you, but it could protect others to some degree. So, you know, some of these, some of these comments, I, I think, went, you know, just had forgotten what we needed to start with. And I think we need to be more vigilant now that we're opening up more things that we need to be more vigilant about wearing masks and keeping that social distancing, especially with things starting to open up, or we are going to see a large spread like we've seen. But what I want to get to is a couple of questions. That is about, one of them is essential travel. My, my thinking is that that is still in effect, that, that their travel is only for essential personnel, that we have some sort of a limited travel ban. And the other, the other thing that maybe you could address is, are you, are you taking a closer look at assisted living communities? With all the deaths that have happened, such a large percentage of deaths in assisted, assisted living places? Are, are we taking some special considerations for that?
Yes, we are. Let's talk about travel first. It's a little bit unclear how the travel restriction is affected by some of the relaxation. I mean, conceivably, you can argue that all of the opening of businesses and places of worth that are being planned, that that's basically confined to individual communities. And it really doesn't necessitate travel. Essential travel could be defined in a lot of different ways. I think if people have a demonstrable need for travel related to their work, or there's a family issue that needs to be taken care of, or a legal issue that needs to be taken care of, those are all valid reasons. I think what we're trying people away from is traveling just for tourism, traveling just, you know, for, for relaxation or, or vacation purposes. And that's what we're still not quite there yet. And I think people need to keep that in mind. It's very tough to enforce. I mean, we, we don't have people, travelers, it just, it can't happen. So people are kind of, it's kind of an honor system. And we, we really want to stress the importance of trying to abide by as much as you can. Because it helps us, it helps the whole community, you know, to, to travel down. At the state level, they're most, this is the thing they're most worried about, is that there's going to be a lot of travel up and down the state and people moving things around and taking the virus back and forth with them. I'm sorry, what was the other question again?
Assisted living.
Assisted living, yeah, sorry. I had a conference with the management at our assisted living at Addy Medium last week. And I reviewed everything that they had put in place. I think our assisted living facility is, has done a superb job. They have some advantages, a lot of other places do not. And they are, it's some measures that I think are over and above what I would have asked them to do. And I told them, don't just keep doing what you're doing, because I think it's going to pay off. You know, they have a very, very elderly population. Their average age is up in the high eighties. So they're being careful and very protective. The other thing that people wonder about is our skilled nursing facility. We're, we're planning to be implemented this week to do surveillance tech for all their patients and their much got that set up, needs to move forward. Doing the recommended testing a regular basis. That's, that's the new testing standard for, for skilled nursing. Because everybody has recognized that, that the still skilled facility is inherently a risky environment. The people are high-risk who are residing there. And, you know, there's a lot of people who come from other, and especially in other communities where they have multiple skilled nursing facilities. The workers work at more than one place. And so they're going back and forth. So the risk of transmitting virus by, by, via a worker who gets infected, and again, maybe not know they're infected, they're asymptomatic. That's high risk. So, you know, the management there has done a superb job. They've gotten very high marks from the, from the state office that regularly sniffs. They think they're doing great. And, you know, we've got plenty of places I think we can create. So I'm going to leave it at that and we'll keep.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Raywall, I'm going to open it up for public comment. And if there are any questions, we'll hold those until the end of the public comment. And then maybe you can address those questions. So you may want to take a note or two. And see if we get any questions that haven't already been answered. Kylie, is there, is there any public comment?
Yes, there is. Give me one second. Linda, can you hear us?
Hello?
Are you there?
I am.
All right, you're good to go.
Okay. Linda Sutter. So there's forty cases without any hospitalization. And that to me speaks volumes. Staying home is not developing herd humanity. Immunity, but working against herd immunity. And you yourself said there were false positives because it's, it's well-known that there are false negatives as well as false positives. And the other thing is Dr. Fauci, I can't remember the lady that works beside him, but just yesterday said that we don't need to wear a mask except for if we cannot social distance. So to carry the mask in the event that there's too many people in one place. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kylie, is there anything else?
Yes, give me one second. Robert, can you hear us?
Hello? Hi, guys. Sorry, I, last time I was abrupt and all, you know, I, it's hard, it's hard to hear, you know, that someone would want to import the virus. And, you know, remind us, that's where we were a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, there's some kind of inconsistency between, you know, what we had talked about and then what was agendized a couple of days later, you know, at twenty-four hours' notice. You know, and I certainly was confused. I'd like to thank, you know, Supervisor Gitlin for asking some tough questions. I was, you know, I was making ass of myself and say things, you know, sometimes I'm confused about something and, you know, you make a a statement that's, you know, from a confused person. But this one thing I like noticed, like on our, we had like a health, a health survey that was done a, a year ago. And it was, it was our first step towards our health department's accreditation. And I just wanted to make sure that the health, our health department is accredited. And maybe that's something I don't understand. And then also kind of bring up, you know, I, like, I brought up, like, that's what I was coming at you guys in late February and early March, was trying to figure out how we all operate as businesses. And, you know, so I always figured these big guys, these big publicly traded companies, we've got a few of them now. You know, it's where our health, our health department needs to be spending some time to, to make sure everybody's doing it right. And I'd wish we had done that previously, kind of as a role model for what is opening up now. You know, and I'm equally concerned with the hotels. But, you know, we have to inspect what we would expect. And we've got to model what we want to see. And so it's not confusing to me, you know, our, our Chamber of Commerce right now on their Twitter feed, they removed the hashtag stay home. And it says hashtag visit Del Norte on their, on their post, on visitdelnor.twitter. You know, so I mean, it would be weird that we're expecting something different. We're, you know, our Chamber of Commerce is at, you know, is actively seeking visitors right now. And, you know, so anything we can do to, you know, take lead and model for what we want to see and inspect what we expect, not the honor system, you know, if it's something important, you know, I mean, the little businesses, I don't think they're such a big deal like haircutting and all. But that's the other thing is herd immunity versus containment, like, like Dr. Reel was saying, you know, we were almost at zero, you know, and I think that's your opportunity to say, hey, let's have this conversation. We're at zero, we're an isolated community, we've got a couple routes in and out. And since the beginning of this, I've noticed that you guys, our county can, is independent, you know, since the very beginning, the Fed said, hey, listen to your local community, you know, they know what's going on most. I just, you know, we really got to get organized and, 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 and take charge, you know. What I've heard a lot is kind of open, 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 open. It sounds like one of those Black Friday commercials, you know, and it's, I appreciate your time. Thanks, you guys. Have a good one.
Okay, thanks, Robert. Anything else?
Um, yes, give me one moment. Orman, can you hear me?
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are. You're good to go.
Go ahead.
I, I need a little clarification on essential worker. Does this pertain to someone who is working in Del Norte? This past week, we had someone say they were an essential worker for the state and could go anywhere. We were, we sent them on, we were afraid of it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Kylie?
Aaron, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep, you are good to go.
All right, hello, Aaron Skroback. With everything opening back up and cases on the rise across the country, I'd like to know where we're planning on getting the needed medical staff for our hospital. Cases of coronavirus are on the rise across the country, and the need for medical professionals are in even higher demand. This was a problem before the pandemic happened, and it's only getting worse now that it has. The idea behind social distancing was to keep the hospitals from becoming overloaded. When stores were allowed to open back up here in Del Norte, we had five cases and four recoveries. Now we're at 40 and seven recoveries in about a week. Granted, none, none have needed to be hospitalized. Yet with growing numbers like this, it's going to happen much sooner than later. On a good day, Sutter required a third to a half of its nursing staff from travel staffing agencies. However, many are now deciding not to renew their contracts and just go home instead. Those that choose to continue on with the travel assignment, knowing they will be treating COVID patients and subsequently be putting their life in danger are demanding premium pay and compensation. In short, it's going to be extremely difficult to recruit new medical staff that are willing to risk their lives in exchange for pay. An alarming survey just revealed that 62% of doctors and nurses plan to quit their job and leave their profession entirely in the next six months. Their job and in hard hit areas, one in 30 already have. Several long-term care facilities with mass spread of COVID-19 have had to evacuate the entire building of residents when staff just stopped showing up. The continuing opening up businesses and failing to enforce Ray Wald's orders for hotels or other shops to be closed result in coronavirus's cases spiking. Contract tracing will become next to impossible. People are not social distancing and refuse to wear masks at their own peril. Healthcare workers are watching this, knowing that these people who have no regard for their own safety will have none for theirs either. Healthcare workers have families too, and protecting them comes above all else, including a paycheck. In summary, stop opening up businesses, enforce the rules already in place, protect your, protect your healthcare workers. So if you need to be, so if you need to go to the hospital, there will be staff to help you recover. Thank you. Stay safe and have a great day.
Thank you. Kylie, anybody else?
Yes, give me one moment. Thomas, can you hear us?
It's Thomas Barnes, can you hear me?
Yes, but you're very, very low volume.
Okay, I'll try to speak up a little bit. I am not going to be able to fix my audio issues. If you can't understand me, let me know and I'll leave, I just won't ask the questions. My question that I need clarification on is, I'm not clear on this, perhaps you all are. Do you require a mask or no mask in the businesses in town? We know that there's no mask required in Walmart or Safeway. Yet Big Five and Home Depot require masks. So what is the hard requirement? Were you able to hear that?
I was able to.
Are you able to hear me or not can't hear me?
Yeah, we, we understood that the questions are going to be answered at the end. So if that's the end of your comment, Thomas, we're going to move on.
Okay, well, it was mask or no mask, that was one. And then the second comment that I have is, do we have the authority to vary from the state guidelines, or do we, are we required to stick to the state guidelines?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Kylie, we got anything else?
Yes, give me just one moment. Janine, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
You are good to go.
I was in Home Depot on last Monday, and when the order just came out and I, and I went in and I saw nobody with masks, especially, and none of the employees had masks. And a lot of the customers didn't have masks. So I posted something on Facebook about, well, don't go into Home Depot. And of course, I got a ration from many different people, but the Home Depot changed their behavior. And that's really what we're looking for is a change in behavior. We're not trying to hurt people or anything, but I don't think if you don't enforce the rules, that the rules are going to be followed. And I wa, and then yesterday I walked into Walmart and the people before me went in without masks. And I asked the guy in the front that was letting them in, I said, I thought masks were mandatory. And he said, no, that's only in the city of, of Crescent City, not in Del Norte. That's what their management is telling them. And so I called management and talked to, I only got the front end person. And he gave me a really insane email, and I tried sending it and it didn't work, and I called back and he gave it to me again. And then I asked for them to contact me if they received it, and I haven't heard anything from them. But somebody on Facebook said that they called corporate and told them or asked them why they weren't complying with the masks. And they said that they would give this Walmart store a call to make them comply because they need to comply with local orders. I personally spent a lot of time trying to follow up on this, and I've lived here for 40 years, and I really care about this community. And I just think that if the message isn't consistent and isn't, fines aren't given out, or there's some repercussions, people aren't going to do it. It's somehow they think it infringes on their, their rights and their freedom at the expense of everybody else. So I don't know, that's all I had to say. I sure wish there would be follow-up though, to make sure that these stores are in compliance. At least have somebody go in and see. I don't think that would be that hard. I'll volunteer. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Kylie, anybody else?
Yes, give me one moment. Jacob, can you hear us? Jacob, are you there?
Yes, I am. My name is Jacob Chilcott. I wanted to share with you my concern with all the folks that traveled here this weekend and several weekends in the past. Any sunny day seems to attract a large crowd of folks from out of town at the local beaches. I go to the beach at least once a day, live fairly close to South Beach. And this weekend, there were, just say, a lot of people at the beaches. And I heard Supervisor Hemmingson bring up the essential travel restrictions. The governor has detailed that in a stay-at-home order. Some communities are enforcing this, and I'm curious why Del Norte County is not. Some communities are writing fines to people that have traveled to their community in, for the amount of $1,000. We saw Humboldt County Sheriff Hansel put out a statement last week telling tourists from out of the area not to come to their community. Communities around Lake Tahoe closed to tourists over the weekend. Why is Del Norte County not addressing this? Particularly during this time and spike of cases, why aren't we not attempting to enforce the essential travel order? It, it just seems like a gross irresponsibility to say that it's too difficult to enforce. I would like to see some discussion and some plans drawn up to, to address this issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kylie, anybody else?
Yes. Robin, can you hear us? Robin, you are unmuted on my end, so you might need to unmute on your end.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're good to go.
Oh, good, thank you. So I have two questions. One of them is something I'm a little bit confused on. Real estate has been considered essential, but it's sounding like now that real estate offices need to come up with a distancing plan or safety plan to submit to the health department in order to open our offices. Is that correct, or do we not need to do anything? And then secondarily, just kind of a thought, and this is something that Dr. Reewalt had touched on just a bit, a little bit. If we don't want to import the virus, it seems like it would be prudent for us here in Del Norte to open the businesses that are open in Brookings. For instance, I know that there are a lot of people going to the gym in Brookings, and now they're traveling back and forth. And going through the bug station, they've said that the traffic increased, and this was actually starting, gosh, Friday before last, I believe. They had said they're seeing about 1,000 cars more a day, and I'm sure that that has increased as time has gone on and people have discovered that they can get those services across the border. So rather than, you know, having people traveling back and forth, it seems prudent to open those same businesses here just to keep people in place with, you know, a plan, of course. And, and that, that's it. Those are my, the two things that I was curious about. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Kylie?
I am not seeing any more public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Reewalt, it looks as though essential travel and the requirement of masks and the state requirements, the guidelines that we have to follow, I know we can be more restrictive, but supposedly we can't be less restrictive. So I, I don't know what else you want to address there, but feel free.
Yeah, let me go down the list a little bit because I took a few notes. I really appreciated Mr. Skroback's comments about healthcare workers because he's absolutely right. We really have to, we have to, because they're going to protect us when we need them the most. And he raises some points that are valid about scarcity of healthcare workers. And we had some, we've had scarcity issues for healthcare workers in this county for decades, and we, anyone who's lived here long enough knows that. And COVID pandemic made it worse. And we're going to have to adjust and make this as a reasonable and attractive place to come and work in the healthcare industry as possible. But I appreciate his comments because protecting those workers is essential, very key. Clarify something that Linda mentioned about false positives. When I was talking about false positives earlier, I was talking about the serology testing. The actual number of false positives for the, the nasal test for the diagnosis, the PCR test, is really very, very small. So that's a very, very sensitive test. That's a test that will pick up case, a case if it's there. It's really, it, it does happen on occasion, but it's not common. But serology testing is a different thing. That has a whole range of false positives and false negatives. And I just want to make sure that everyone understood the difference. As far as the mask rule, we wrote it as an order to be mandatory across the board. There's no exceptions for businesses or offices. We wanted to do this because we wanted to give the option for those businesses to be able to enforce it and be able to say, yeah, there's a health officer order that says you have to wear a mask in my, in my business, my place of business. Because they're protecting themselves too. You know, it's kind of like no shirt, no shoes, no service. Well, now it's no shirt, no shoes, no mask, no service. And that's kind of where we hope this goes. We realize that rolling out something like this takes some time to get the word out. Not everybody knows about it right away. We're trying not to hold people's toes to the fire about it or anything like that. But yes, it's expected anywhere in Del Norte County for indoors, if you're in this environment, and it's a public enterprise. We want your customer employers to be wearing masks. It's pretty simple. Appreciate what Janine said about checking out on, checking out these businesses that are not complying with it. But again, some of it has to do with just the timing. The order hasn't been in effect that long. We, that going forward, people are going to pay more attention to it, and we'll get, we'll get better compliance. Could we settle for it? Technically, yes. It's tough to do, and it's a, it's a big burden on law enforcement and the courts. But yes, we can if we have to. And we're not that off the table. I think everyone needs to understand that there are some citations that they could face. Mr. Chilcott mentioned the beaches and hotels, and that's also tough. We're gonna, we, we learned about the issue of hotels much being, some of them were pretty much full this weekend, and we were really disappointed. We found out about it very late in the week, in fact, it was Friday afternoon. Wasn't much we could do at, at the health department level to, to make a change. But I think what we're going to have to do is have a conversation with all these folks and make them realize that we're able to monitor this and, and go going forward. Because we, we don't want to see this happen over and over again all summer until, until we're, we're comfortable that we're at a place where that should happen. And like, a lot of that depends on the state. And Supervisor Hemmingson, you mentioned that we can't, we can't supervise the state orders. We can make state orders more strict, but we can't make them less strict. And that's generally been the case throughout this whole pandemic. So some, some locations are, are ratcheting down a little bit more than the state, but we can't do it less than the state. So until the state gives us the, the green light to open up further things, we have to follow their rules. And that's pretty much the way we've been going with this. And the last comment about real estate offices and essential businesses, places listed as essential. We have not made an issue about turning in plans, but we would like them all to turn in plans. And some of them have done, I mean, we've talked into some of the banks that we've had open during this time, and they've just done extraordinary measures to protect people and protect their staff and their customers. And if, and almost all of them have those plans laid out. We would like to see them. The planning and the checklists and the plan development that we want for the businesses reopen, that is also essential to us going forward because we want to be able to monitor what they're actually putting in to, to making their business environment safe. Want to be able to go to these businesses somewhere down the road when we have the chance and walk through and look around and make sure they're doing what they said they were doing in their plan and, and offering any guidance that we can offer at the time to, to maybe fine tune it, make it better. None of these measures are, we can't prove that they're going to prevent virus transmission in those businesses. But everything that they do that's a step forward is better than not taking that step. So we're just encouraging people to be creative, work with the economic resiliency team at preparedelnor.com. They've got tons of resources for people to, to go through to develop their plans and, and get them in so we can review it. And yes, if, if they've been essential and they want to turn in their plans to us, we, we strongly encourage that. And for real estate, have a plan and turn it into us. We'd love, we want to look it over and make sure everything, what you, what you're doing is, is safe and meets the standard that's set by the state. That's the other thing that people need to understand about this. There are some state guidance documents that have been released from state website for about a week and a half now. There are some state guidance documents that have been released from state website for about a week and a half now. And there's more coming. And they cover a lot of these industries that are in these, in stage two and in the later stages of reopening. And people should consult because that's the standard that we are going to be held to. And that's the absolute standard that we should be holding our local businesses to. So please check those out. Please go to that website and get the help you need to write your plans and get them in.
Yeah, thank you very much, Dr. Raywall. And I don't know if you want to speak to the item about the essential travel on a state employee. You said they were a state employee and travel wherever.
That's, that speaks to the problem of trying to monitor travel. Because if somebody says I'm a central worker and I'm here and, I mean, do you card them? Do you ask them to produce proof of that? There are so many bookings that can be done online. It's just a complicated piece of business. And, you know, they're probably right to turn them away, but, you know, it's, it's just hard to prove. And there really isn't a good system in place to make that work well other than than encouraging our vacation rental owners and our hotels and all these places that would rent to travelers right now to do the best you can to check on their identity. And we're working on trying to come up with some ideas to make this a little bit easier for everybody. But I think it's a tough problem. And that's seeing it in a big way this last weekend. It was, it was a problem this last weekend, no question.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Raywall. I appreciate it. We are going to move on to the rest of our agenda. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number eleven, which is to approve and appoint Joel Campbell Blair as Del Norte County Council at range A dash one, step C, effective May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty, as requested by the county administrative officer.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment?
Chair, I am not seeing any at this time.
Okay, would you please pull a vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Absolutely, yes. Welcome, Joel. Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move on to budget transfers. We have budget transfer oh five dash oh four and the amount of twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars within the livestock budget.
Move to approve, oh five and oh four.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any public comment?
Chair, I am not seeing any at this time.
Okay, would you please pull a vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, legislative and budget issue, item number fourteen, discussed and directed staff to prepare a letter urging the legislature and governor to stabilize realignment funding by not billing for lost base revenue in both the current budget years as both the current and budget years have requested. Anyway.
So the letter before you today is a support letter explaining the support for what you just read. And it has a number of agencies that are backing this, including our direct advocates, RCRC and CSAC. I think as a board understands, realignment funding is a wide-ranging and very important funding to the county, primarily on the public safety and on the social service side of our services that we provide. And they're hoping that the stabilization and dealing with this proactively for ninety-one and two thousand and eleven will assist everybody in their budgeting as we go forward into the new budget year.
Motion to approve?
Second. Mr. Chairman, even though with my second, I would request that staff add Assemblyman Wood and Senator McGuire on to the CCs for this. I know they're both paying very close attention to this, especially in the assembly as it moves through this week.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Kylie, would you pull a vote? Any public comment?
Chair, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, would you pull a vote, please?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, item number fifteen, fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one budget update. Information from Jay.
This is the first update that I have presented. Formerly, we have been meeting with some of our larger departments and we have a full slate of meetings this week with a number of other service departments, primarily attempting to look at the requested budget that they have submitted individually. Look at what needs are there. Little those budgets down as much as possible at this point. There is information coming through the annual budget or the, in this case, the May revise from the state of California. And there will be a lot of debate and discussion over what the governor has proposed because of the very large projected deficit that the state is looking at. And going through this each, each year, we're looking at what revenue we're looking for that comes through the state of California, but also that we know will be received directly to the county, including sales tax and property tax, as well as also looking at what we may be rolling over from this year's budget. And obviously, with the shutdown, there are pros and cons that go along with that. There's lost revenue, but there's also expenses that are not being expended. So we'll be going through that process over this next week. We hope to have most of the departments done by the, going into the first week of June. And currently, we're utilizing the priorities from last year that the board had put in place. We do not know at this point where we're going to be once the year end comes in in August. That is fairly typical. The requested budget was very similar to what last year's request was. And so the deficit at that point that we started with was very similar. So if there are questions about process or otherwise, there's an attachment in here about our normal process, start to finish. We will not get this finished until the end of September as the board understands. We are different than, say, the city of Crescent City that has a mandate by June thirtieth. We do have the ability to go later and we typically do. And that's indicative of many, many counties in California. And I think there's going to be more counties that are utilizing the same process just because of the unknowns at this time. So if there are any questions at this point, I'll take those. But suffice to say that we're looking for additional and more tangible information from when the state finally adopts their budget. And I know that there will be a lot of discussions and wrangling as it goes through the process.
Okay, any comments or questions from board members?
Jay, would you go over for the public's?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Jay, would you go over for the public's edification, the five priorities on our budget?
Currently, it is maintain current service levels, which includes employee payroll and benefits associated with those services we provide. Funding mandated programs is required by the state and federal law and regulations. Maintaining a contingency fund of a hundred thousand dollars to address emergency needs. Any transfers out of that contingency fund require a forfeit vote. Maintain a capital improvement budget sufficient to address the highest priority deferred maintenance projects. That would be a hundred thousand dollars at the beginning. Fund the annual debt service obligation for the Border Coast Airport Authority Terminal Development Project. And number six was actually fully funded position that addresses resource-related needs of the county and the Community Development Department, which was not something that could be dealt with during this last fiscal year.
Anybody else got any comments or questions? Okay. With that, it's not an action item, it was just an update. Is there anything else, Kylie?
Yes, we still need to take up item number nine.
Oh, did I miss that? Oh, sorry about that. Get right over it. Item number nine, approve and authorize the chair to sign a letter of support to the California Department of Food and Agriculture endorsement of the powerful replacement project at the Del Norte County Fairgrounds to ensure the facility is operational at all times to augment our ability to provide for public health and safety of Del Norte County citizens. Jay?
I can. This is a request from the district to support a project, a grant project that they're trying to put in place. And as such, we're recommending approval of that. We do utilize the fairgrounds, although with the state getting more involved this year, it's becoming more difficult getting agreements in place. But obviously, we utilize the fairgrounds whenever possible in emergency times and we fully support this.
Great. I entertain a motion. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment, Kylie?
I'm going to give it a second. I am not seeing any public comment at this time, Chair.
Okay, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan? Supervisor Cowan?
Looks like she froze up.
Supervisor Howard?
I did. Sorry. Yes.
Yes.
And Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Is that it, Kylie? Or hit them all?
That's all that we had.
Okay, with that, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned to our next meeting, June ninth, twenty twenty. Thank you.
Thank you.